Good morning. It's eight thirty. We have a quorum. I'll call the meeting to order. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three on our agenda is an invitation for a citizen to schedule time on the commission agenda for an item not listed. Are there any citizens here who would like to schedule an item? Seeing none, we'll move on to item four, which is approval of the agenda. Is there any additions to the agenda before we approve it?
Yes, I need to add one item onto the executive session, item twelve, one twenty-five, two-six for security.
Any other additions to the agenda? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion been made in second, and any comments on the agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item five is consent agenda items. We have item A, approval of the minutes, B, approval of the travel requests, C, approval of personnel action notices, D, approval of cellular authorizations, E, approval of human services report. I guess that's all of them. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments? Any questions? Motion's made in second, and we'll call the roll.
Pierce?
Bozma?
Hi.
Krogman?
Hi.
Jensen?
Hi.
Bartley?
Hi.
Motion carries.
Item six is routine business. A is approval of the claims. Then you have the claims for September cell phones and claims payable. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made in second, and any comments? Any comments? If not, we'll call the roll.
Bozma?
Hi.
Krogman?
Hi.
Jensen?
Hi.
Pierce?
Hi.
Bartley?
Hi.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. We'll start with our department head reports. Brian? We'll do the highway department first.
Well, I, what's that? Excuse my not having a report. I didn't get any of the information back I was intending to include in the report. And one of them was the bridges south on seventy-seven. I did talk with the DOT, and then this morning I just went down there and they are back to work. They are pumping water, and they will be commencing to get to work once they get the water pumped down. It is below flood stage, so they can get back to their work. And a little update on the twenty-seven bridge, which I didn't hear back from them calling until Friday. But they ended up, the contractor wanted to actually pull a core out of the grout and have that tested, and we're awaiting results on that. But other than that, no paving or anything like that's been done out there, so it is still closed. But those are the two updates for the bridges. We're gonna be chip sealing this week. We're intending to go today, but with the wind and whatnot, we held it back another day. Other than that, I don't have much.
Any questions for Brian?
Have we posted an update on the seventy-seven bridge, just so that the public is aware of kind of flood stage and things that we've been dealing with there?
Yeah, we've been keeping kind of up to date, but with the fluctuation this fall, I guess we'll be more on that.
Any other questions? None. Thank you, Brian. Sheriff Marty?
Good morning.
Morning.
I have thirty-three in jail right now, which is somewhat of a manageable. I still suffer, or we still struggle with classification, putting individuals in cells and so forth. The inmate that's in Falk County needed to go to the dentist. He had three rotten teeth, and the doctor in Falkton didn't wanna do it because he felt that it was gonna come, the tooth would come out in pieces. So they took him to Aberdeen, and Aberdeen actually treated us pretty good. Nine hundred dollars for three. That's pretty good. I just got a crown that cost me a fortune, so nine hundred dollars for three teeth. So they really treated us good, and so, anyway. We had the DAV motorcycles on Saturday, and we had, there was an accident on three-twenty-four where a motorcycle appeared that it, there's some new oil there, and I don't exactly, we don't know what happened at this point, but he went up on that new oil and went down. And then there was a second motorcycle that saw that he went down, and then he went down to avoid hitting him directly. So the first motorcycle, he, it was injured pretty good and was helicoptered. I don't know about what his condition is right now, so, but there was over, what, six hundred motorcycles bottom? Six, forty-seven or something like that, so when they're bunched up like that, you kinda worry about something happening, but we've been lucky. Twenty-four-seven continues to be busy, got a hundred and forty participants, got forty-three people on PBTs. That means eighty-six people come in twice a day. I have nineteen on SCRAM, seventy-seven on UAs, but that's not counting Drug Court or Hope Court. I have three on GPS, and that's it. Let's see if you guys have some questions.
Any questions? Commissioner Pierce?
The inmate that's in Falkton, is that pre-trial detention, or is that somebody that's been sentenced?
That's pre-trial. Pre-trial. Pre-trial, yes.
Thank you.
Yep. I'd like to bring him back as soon as I can, but I just can't. He needs to be probably by himself, and I just don't have the space.
He's the defendant in the homicide case.
Any other? Go ahead.
Pardon?
Go ahead.
I was just gonna say also, the detour on eighty-one still creates us traffic issues on the east end of the county, but we've been working traffic and lots of speeding and so forth, trying to get around. But I have had a deputy work that area. And also, of course, it's school starting, so we had some issues with speeding and so forth around the schools and trying to be everywhere at the same time. We seem to get it done, so. Got the speed trailer out in Elkton, and we're gonna move it to Volga.
Appreciate the efforts around the school. I think that's important.
Yep, absolutely.
Any other questions for Marty?
Thanks.
Thank you, Marty. Vicki, we'll have you come up with treasurer's report.
Morning.
Good morning.
To give you an idea, what we've been doing is just trying to keep above water. We've had a lot of people either, we've had surgeries, we've had sickness, we've had babies, we've had everything in our office, so we are just trying to keep above water. It was extremely busy last week with the end of the month, and I really wanna commend our people in our office. They've done awesome, so, but just busy trying to keep above water. We have the state auditors there. We've got two right now, so they always need something or have questions. And I did receive the centrally assessed utilities last week, and I've gotten started on that, but not to any point to know how we are. I don't think it's gonna change the figures much, but I did get those, so I will be working on that this week. Otherwise, just business as usual. Any questions?
Any questions for Vicki?
Thank you.
Thank you, Vicki. I'd come and help, but I don't think I'd be much help. Sorry. Bob, we'll have you come up next.
Good morning. I gave you a staff report, so I won't go over literally everything, but we do have Office of Emergency Management coming up on Wednesday, which I guess is tomorrow, to visit us at 1:00 PM. We've got a planning meeting this evening, starts at 8:00 PM. Today at eleven AM, I got FEMA. This is the first time FEMA has contacted us about our claim. This is what's known as an exploratory call. After today's call, they've got to start acting within two weeks, according to the rules of FEMA, as long as, understanding there's a big hurricane down south that may mess everything up. But I'll be able to give you a better update after the eleven AM call. We've got our big exercises coming up. We do have our National Preparedness Day. And the only additional thing I've got is September twenty-fourth, I'll be briefing the Brookings City Council on Emergency Management Matters. That'll be my last municipal government briefing for the fiscal year 2019. Any questions?
Any questions? Commissioner Pierce?
I actually have two questions.
Yes.
Have you heard anything about a meeting on the census? I haven't heard anything yet on that.
We are awaiting, I contacted the census guy. We was in contact on Friday. I do have his email now, so the guy's out of Parkston or Park, one of them P towns. And we are just waiting for the mayor of Brookings to sign the documents for the complete count committee, and then we're gonna start rocking and rolling on the census meeting.
And then, are you able to give us any update on what's going on with the Madera Township situation?
No, ma'am.
For our next meeting, could you just?
I can try. I mean, I talked to the Madera Township person that's involved in that at the last joint jurisdiction meeting, and they were saying the water is too high to do anything, but I'll reach out and see if I can find anything additional out.
And what I'd really like to know is who we're waiting for now?
Okay, I will see what I can find.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Bob?
Thank you.
Thank you. Kristen, have your report?
Hey, good morning. Just a quick programming update, and then we'll go from there. We have a archery event, as well as our concealed carry class, on the fifteenth of September. Both of those, or the concealed carry class is actually full at twelve participants, except I did have one email me about an hour ago, and he wants to take the next one, so I'll end up with one space open, but it filled pretty quickly. The archery event is actually open to the public for certain hours and then members for other hours, so it's gonna be kind of like a private exclusive, and then we're gonna take some of the items, not necessarily away, but some events being provided by Game Fish and Parks, and then they're gonna actually remove their pieces while they're there teaching, and then the rest of the event will be open to the public. We have the Red Cross doing their blood drive on that next Monday, so the sixteenth. Typically a day that we're not open to the public in any capacity, so it works out really well to open the doors and then have people kinda come in who may not, you know, see the facility any other way. In the last two weeks, we've had four parties with archery tag, and that's starting to pick up. And then we had college students. We've sold seven college memberships in just the last week. So that's obviously spread the word, 'cause last year it took a couple weeks for that all to come in. In the last week, we did provide donations to the DAV for their run, not only as prizes, but just as like regular handouts for day passes to get people into the facility. And then we did the same thing with the Salvation Army, so they could do silent bids on memberships. And then all the new marketing material is out, and then the new website, I don't know if you guys have been there, but that is up. It links back to Game Fish and Parks and also to the extension office, so we have that dual linkage. And then we're gonna start working on our new commercial that does include some information. It'll have everything in the building, but it'll show 4-H, it'll show Game Fish and Parks, and it'll show all the different pieces inside the facility that you can do, all the different ranges and things like that. And then what other piece, I know last Thursday I was at a doctor's appointment, and we didn't have our staff come in until, you know, the normal time of five. However, they were able to come in a little bit early, and I think that just kinda reiterates. We had somebody come in, wanted to drop something off at 4-H, and nobody was there. 4-H wasn't there. And I think it kinda reiterates that conversation that we had previously about looking at adding the additional hours of a part-time person to cover somebody else to be there at all times during that normal business hours of, you know, like the nine to five, especially if I can't be there, or if I'm at a meeting, or if I'm here, and, you know, we have an event going on. I do have coverage today, so, you know, things along those lines. Also, just taking that into consideration, since I know we're talking about provisional budgets today. Any questions?
Any questions from the commissioners?
Thank you.
Thank you, Kristen. Misty? She was gonna sit way back there and yell that. Okay, Misty has no report. And Mike is getting coffee, and then we'll do his report, as soon as he's done with Sheriff Marty. You're up, Mike.
Sorry about that. I was real quickly talking with the sheriff about one of my veterans that's been having some issues and coming up with an answer for that. We were closed all last week for training. Happy to say we took the test. We haven't got the results back, but I'm fairly confident we both have passed it very well. Other than that, we'll start going up on campus once a month and meeting with the veterans up there. It does appear as if we're getting quite a large number of requests for rent, and I'll probably, I did go to the last Salvation Army meeting, and in case you don't know, the Salvation Army has hired a full-time personnel, and so I'm hoping to work with her a little bit more and find out if we can't change around a few of the things that the county's been picking up that maybe the Salvation Army can take over. Any questions?
Any questions for Mike? We're really going easy on you guys today. Thank you very much. All right, our nine o'clock is not scheduled yet, so we're gonna move on to regular business. Item eight, A, an action to approve agreement number nineteen-five-seven, an application for occupancy of right-of-way of county highways made by HD Electric Cooperative, Inc. of Laketon Township. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made in second, and any comments? Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item B is an action to approve agreement number nineteen-five-eight, an application for occupancy of right-of-way of county highways made by HD Electric Cooperative, Inc. of Laketon Township. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, and any comments? Any comments from anyone? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item C is an action to approve agreement number nineteen-five-nine, an application for easement for use of county road right-of-way made by Northern Sky Dairy in Sterling Township. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made in second, and any comments? Brian?
Well, this is just a follow-up from the spring, trying to work with these, with these ag operators to keep the manure pipes going in the right direction and not through our drainage structures.
Any further questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item D is an action to approve agreement number nineteen-six-zero, an application for easement for use of county road right-of-way made by Northern Sky Dairy in Sterling Township. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made in second. Any other comments? Same report, Brian? Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item E is an action to approve agreement number nineteen-six-one, an application for easement for use of county road right-of-way made by Lindy Dairy LLC in Sherman Township. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, and any comments? Brian, any comments on this one? Same thing? All right. Any other comments? Additional comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item F, action to approve agreement number nineteen-six-two, an application for easement for use of county road right-of-way made by Lindy Dairy LLC of Sherman Township. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, and same similar report. Any comments? Any comments? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item G is a discussion and possible action to declare county parcels as surplus property to be sold via public auction or to deed to another governmental entity. We have some documents. I guess, who is in charge of this? Vicki?
Both Stacy and I have worked on this, so.
All right, we have one, two, three, four different parcels. Do you want, we'll handle them all separately.
Yeah.
Okay. Do you wanna go over parcel number three-five-nine-six-zero-one? Get those in focus. One zero nine five two dash one four three dash one five in Sinai Town Outlots North, two-hundred-and-eighty-one feet of the west, five-hundred-and-sixty-three feet of Outlot Southwest Quarter, fourteen dash one oh nine dash five two. We'll look for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second. Now Vicki, a report, please.
This was a property that the county took tax deed to in nineteen-thirty-six, and it's been in the county's name ever since, and I have talked to the town of Sinai. They were just under the assumption it was their city property, but we would like to, with your approval, give that property to the city of Sinai to deed that over. It's SLU, it's, you know, there's not really any value in that property.
Any other comments? Any other questions?
I just was wondering how far that was from our shop.
The shop is...
Three blocks.
Yeah, our shop is here, right? And where I'm, I don't know if zooming in on this would make it any better.
Is that the other exit?
Our shop is here, this parcel right here. If you can see my cursor, right in here.
Is that the other exit to Sinai?
Yeah.
Must be two. Any other comments or questions? Comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item two is parcel number three-one-nine-seven-zero dash one-zero-nine-four-nine dash zero-two-one dash zero-zero in Aurora Town Farmland Subdivision Lot A of Government Lot Three, south of the railroad tracks. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second. Vicki, a report.
And this is one the county also took tax deed to, and that was done in nineteen-twenty-four. And so we're just trying to clean all these parcels up that the county owned, and this is one of them that I think someone talked to the city of Aurora, I think one of the commissioners, and it didn't sound like they'd be interested, but we do have people that are interested in this parcel, if we could sell this by public auction.
Well, I guess we declare surplus. We decide if it's auction or not, or is that part of the motion, it should be an auction?
Part of the motion is that that should be auctioned.
Okay. I thought that's what it was. Any other discussions? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item three is parcel number three-two-one-two-five dash zero-two-seven-zero-zero dash zero-zero-five dash zero-zero in Brewstown Blocks Twenty-five, Twenty-six, Twenty-seventh, and Outlots P and Q Lot Five Block Twenty-seventh. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, and this is for auction also?
Yep. This is a lot, an empty lot in Bruce that is in the flood plain. The county took tax deed to this in two thousand, and it just never got on the rolls to do anything with it. I've talked to the city of Bruce, and since it's in the flood plain, they would like to have the city just take tax deed to that between them and the neighbors. They have been mowing it at this point, and so we would like to, if possible, deed that over to the city of Bruce.
So the action is to deed it over, not auction?
Correct.
Correct, okay. Any other discussion, comments? Comments? None. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item four, parcel number three-four-four-two-five dash zero-two-two-zero-zero dash zero-zero-four dash zero-zero in Elkton Town, Lot Four Block Twenty-two, in the subdivision entitled Blocks Fourteen to Twenty-six. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second. A report, Vicki.
Yes, this is one the county, it took tax deed to. Dan State's attorney had prepared the tax deed for that. It was filed with the Register of Deeds, and we're in the waiting period right now. The sixty days is up now in September that we can dispose of it. This, when we took tax deed to, or when we started the proceedings to take tax deed, there was a house on this property. The people that live there are both deceased, and the family didn't want anything to do with it, so we proceeded with the proceedings. And the city of Elkton had already declared this as a nuisance, and during the time when we were in the probationary period, the city had this, the house and all the buildings on it taken down, and it was like over six thousand dollars in what it cost to destroy this property. So right now, it's an empty lot. It sits across from the ball field, and the city is interested in this property, and in talking to them, they would pay the back taxes on this property to get it. So that's what we are hoping to do, so we can get the back taxes paid and get all the entities their taxes, and then we won't, you know, if we can give that to the city of Elkton, then they can do with it what they want. They've talked about giving, or, you know, just making a parking lot out of it, but also in paying the back taxes, they'll have some money into it, so then they talked also about selling it, then it would be back on the tax rolls. But there's no set thing on what they wanna do, and the mayor of Elkton is willing to come in and talk to the commission on this, if you would like.
Any questions or comments?
Vicki, the city paid the contractor to clear the lot?
Yes, they did.
And the back taxes again are how much?
They're about forty-four hundred dollars.
Any other questions or comments? So the action we're taking today is to declare the surplus, and we'll decide whether or not we're going to negotiate with the city of Elkton a tax deed or auction or whatever.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm struggling with this one a little bit. I think it's, I guess I haven't seen it, but it would seem to me it'd be worth more than what we're selling it for. But then, you know, the Elkton has some money into it and could get that money back out.
So they're gonna be about ten grand into it with their six thousand plus the four thousand tax deed, so. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
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 We have a division. We'll call the roll.
I thought that was the whole, I thought it was just declare it surplus.
Thought it was to give it to the city of Elkton.
No, it was declared surplus, and then we'd make the action. Depending on negotiation.
You wanna declare it surplus today, and if we want the mayor to come in and go over this, that would be, be just fine, but at least we can declare it surplus, so.
We're gonna go ahead and call the roll.
Krogman?
I guess clarification. So what are we voting on? Because we have on here...
We're voting on declaring it surplus, and then we will have further action as to the actual disposal.
That's the way I understand it.
It just says, there's recommendation. Recommendation says sell to Elkton City for payment of back taxes. Recommendation says sell to Elkton City for payment of back taxes, is the recommendation.
That would be a negotiation.
I think for, for clarification, since the original intent of the emotion, the motion was to do the recommendation, I think you do the, do the roll call on that initial motion to deed it to Elkton. And then, and then do another motion to declare it, just declare it a surplus to negotiate the way of disposal at a later date. Because we did have that motion on the table, and we'd already did a voice vote, so.
Voice vote was inconclusive, so we called for a roll call. Two ways we can handle this. Right now, we can handle it as a recommendation to be surplus and take it further action later. Or you can vote this down at this particular point and get clarification on what you want to do with the property and let the mayor come and make his plea.
I, I think it was my motion, if I remember correctly. And my motion was to approve selling it to the city of Elkton for the
Okay.
tax, because that's what was in what Vicky gave us. And I think we need to do the roll call vote on that, and then another motion.
Yes. We can, we can handle that, and we can do another motion after that. Okay, so let's call the roll on the original motion to deed it to the city of Elkton.
Krogman?
No.
Jensen?
No.
Pierce?
No.
Borsma?
No.
Bartley?
No.
Motion fails.
Alright, the floor is open for any additional motions.
I would make a motion, we declare it surplus property with further discussion on how we are going to dispose of the property.
Second.
Just put a clarification, this particular piece of property as we described it. Not the rest, just this one.
Just this one, yeah. Yeah, the other ones are passed, I think. This is, I'm just, number four here, the Elkton one.
Any other comments or questions on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Or nay? Motion carries.
Just, just a remark, though. I'm sorry, I'm on hold. If we have some question as relates to the value, I think by state statute, we should auction as opposed to deed. And then the city could bid on it, that, but we don't have to decide that today. I'm just planting that seed for everybody to think about.
Does that have a certain value that you have to?
Pardon me?
Does it have to be appraised at a certain value before you can do auction? You have to have an auction or not?
I don't think so.
We'll find out.
Can the city, uh?
The city can bid at the auction, as can any citizen.
But I mean, the city's cleanup costs, can they be, can they?
You reverse those cleanup costs?
No. Just, just something to think about. We don't have to decide today. We've got options besides deeding it over.
Alright. We have a scheduled agenda item at nine AM. It's a public hearing and action to approve a temporary alcohol license for Genwell Hospitality Group Inc. doing business as Wilbert's for Saturday, October fifth, twenty nineteen at Oakwood Lakes Lodge, Bruce, South Dakota. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. At this time, the motion been made and seconded. I'll open a public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to address this at a public hearing? Just need to come up and identify yourself if you want to address this issue. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing and open it for board comments or questions. Any board comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll call the roll.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Borsma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
We have a scheduled item at nine oh five. It is now close enough to that. Public hearing and action to approve a temporary alcohol license for J and A Dietrich LLC doing business as J Street Pub on Saturday, September fourteenth, twenty nineteen, at Oakwood Lakes Lodge, Bruce, South Dakota. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. With that, I'll open up a public hearing. Is anybody like to speak to this application, this issue? Anybody like to speak to this issue? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing and open it up for board comments and questions. Any board comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll call the roll.
Pierce?
Aye.
Borsma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Alright, our next public hearing is not until nine thirty, so we're gonna move back on the agenda. The commission department director's report. If we got everything else.
Part of my report, the director's report portion, there was information about a complaint that we received from Kyle Vanderwall regarding the thirty-five mile per hour speed limit change going north out of Volga on Samara Avenue or four hundred and sixty-fourth Avenue. Just for some kind of timeline history on this, we held the first reading July second. There was notice given in the legal papers on July eleventh. The second reading, public hearing and adoption occurred at the July twenty-third meeting. This was actually published as part of the minutes. The full text of the ordinance was on August first. That triggered our twenty-day referral period. That came and went on August twenty-first. The signs were installed. Did not receive any comments. No one was here to discuss this matter as part of the public hearing process. And now, as part of my report, you can see some of the concerns that Mr. Vanderwall has. His farming operation is in that area. I, I told him, Brian and Marty can speak to this as well. I think maybe we've received one other call. Maybe Marty has just had a conversation with one other person. You know, I told Mr. Vanderwall that I would bring this to your attention, because he asked if there was anything, you know, that he could do, if he could, you know, get a petition. And I said, well, the referral period has come and, has come and gone at this point. So it basically would have to come back for any change that the board would want to see happen. But I don't know, Brian and Marty may have more to add to that.
This is kind of an unusual situation. It was the Vanderwall that complained about the traffic there. And it's a family thing. They don't get, apparently don't get along. So they didn't talk to each other. But I talked to the original person that wanted the speed limit, Phil Vanderwall, and he still wants that speed limit there because his wife has a daycare, and there are seven driveways there. And to me, the one that's calling in wanting to raise back up, but his concerns to me are not even valid, what he's talking about. So I think for public safety, this is an unusual situation, and when the other complainant that I called up, and when I talked to him about, you know, this is a unusual, you know, I, I think there's probably a lot of farmers in Brookings County who like to have the speed limit drop by their house so they can get their machinery in and out. But they don't have seven driveways either. And so this is kind of a unique situation, and, and I, I just feel it should remain, like I said, the original person that was concerned, I called. It's a family thing. But he, he still would like that speed limit to stay at, at thirty-five, so.
Question, it would take a petition to request us to change it back, is that correct? At this, I mean, that's one avenue would be a petition.
Well, I would think so. Plus, I told the ones, there's, you know, we, the county has some money tied up in this too, you know.
Yeah.
I don't know how many times we went out there and looked at this and, and, and so forth. So, I mean, it's, it's not something we just, what I don't like is that they blame the county for changing the speed limit. We had nothing to do with that other than look at that for safety in a request. I did not advertise very much about that speed limit being reduced there, but Kyle Vanderwall's done a good job on his Facebook, so I think a lot of people know that that speed limit reduced there, so I didn't, I didn't have to advertise too much. But I, I see that, that that can be. When we did our traffic analysis there, eighty-five percent of the vehicles that went past those driveways were at fifty-seven miles an hour. And then one was clocked at eighty, and, and a couple clocked at seventy passed there, so. I do feel with all those driveways that it makes sense to have it at the lower speed.
I guess the only comment I have, you know, we did work with the city on this also. You know, they went through the same process. And then speaking with them too, this was the only route into the city of Volga that did not have a speed limit prior to this. You know, on the south side of town, it, it stretches out there quite a ways. You know, on the north side, it was fifty-five all the way up to Highway fourteen, so.
Yes, the city did go do an ordinance this summer as well, reducing the speed limit within their, their jurisdictional area. The city limits from fifty-five down to thirty-five.
Alright.
So they went through that process as well.
It was a, a joint venture with them, you know. They had to go through the same advertising process as we did. I, I look at it, same with Marty, is the safety aspect, you know. There isn't a whole lot of farms out there that have this many entrances. I guess I'm, I'm pretty stuck on, on leaving it there.
Any other comments or questions? Do you have more to report?
Yes. We did receive correspondence from the historical society. That letter was included with my report. They wanted to let you know that they used some of the funding for fiscal year nineteen in a different way than what they had originally intended to use that. And this goes back to when they submitted their request for fiscal year nineteen back in probably June of twenty eighteen. But they had some needed roof repairs, and so our funding went, to them went to get those roof repairs done. Also, there is, you've been invited to the open house. That is actually tomorrow for Daktronics. Open house from five to seven, tours from five to six thirty, and the shareholder meeting at seven. And here is Bob's flyer for the Preparedness Day event, Friday, September thirteenth, from ten to two, here at this building. And then you've also been invited to the Innovation Summit. This is coming up Thursday, October seventeenth, but it does look like there's registration, a registration fee. So if anyone, if you do know now that you're planning to go to that event, I can, if you would like me to register for you, I can do that. Or if you plan to do that on your own, that's fine too. Just let me know. The, the deadline is still a little ways off, if you don't know. But if you do know now that you want to, just, just let me know. Other than that, next, well, we're coming up here in a, in a couple of weeks. We do have our SDACC Fall Convention out in Pier. I believe everyone except Mike Bartley is registered for that, and I think I know just Commissioner Borsma's going out Sunday. The rest are coming Monday morning. We did get kind of the second half of our county road tour scheduled. That's going to be Tuesday, October first. Commission meetings in October are actually the, the second and the fourth Tuesdays. Because we, we skip, we, we skip a week. We are actually the fourth Tuesday of September because, due to convention. And then instead of having one right away again the next week, we skipped a week, so it's October eighth. So this tour is, will be that morning, that Tuesday morning, October first. And there isn't a commission meeting that day. But we will leave, we'll leave from the highway shop at about eight thirty again that day. And then I just discussed the Innovation Summit. Again, let me know if you plan to attend that. And that's all I have, unless you have any other questions for me.
Any questions? Hearing none. Dan will have the state's attorneys report. You, you had fifteen minutes to fill, Dan. Alright, our, let's go ahead and do the commissioner reports. We'll start with Commissioner Pierce.
On August twentieth, I attended the conservation tour with the rest of you, and I'd like to thank the, the Conservation District for doing that every year. It was a, a really educational event, and all the work that they're doing with pollinators is truly impressive. On August twenty-second, Commissioner Krogman and I met with some city representatives to talk about the jail. I can't report that there was any movement on what's going on. On August twenty-second, I attended the Mirror's Volunteer Appreciation Reception, and there was a really good turnout for that. On the twenty-seventh of August, I serve on BEDC as the commission's representative. And for BEC, I am on the BEDC Investment Committee. And we had a meeting just to kind of discuss what's going on in industrial park. On the twenty-eighth, I attended the BEDC meeting. Steve Westra from the Governor's Office of Economic Development came, and, and he spoke. Basically, that was what the whole meeting was about, and talked about what was going on with the governor. And he did, without even being asked a question, come out and offer his support on the I twenty-nine, the Twentieth Street interchange. And I think his office is going to be very helpful on that. And he did talk about the support that they would like to be giving toward wind energy and toward concentrated animal feeding operations, and some directions that that office is working as relates to those issues. And then that'd be all I'd have to report.
Thank you. Commissioner Borsma?
On the twentieth was also part of the Conservation District tour, and that was the first time that I had ever been to eighty honey farms, which was incredibly interesting. Also, I really enjoyed the whole afternoon. It was great. The twenty-first, I attended the Ten County meeting with most of the rest of you. The twenty-second was also at the mayor's reception. The twenty-eighth met with state's attorney's office about our CMR contracts and getting those finalized. And then the twenty-ninth was the Domestic View Shelter Board meeting discussing kind of forward movement fundraising and finances. So working on budgets for a lot of those other boards this fall as well.
Commissioner Krogman?
On the twentieth, I was on the conservation tour also. Again, it was a nice afternoon. The twenty-first, we had a Ten County meeting, and over in Clear Lake, which was, was interesting also with some of the, the new stuff that'll be coming out there. That were involving a lot of the counties near us, and talked about jails and different things like that, and different stuff they're looking for in the legislature to work on. So that was updating there. We really didn't have too much on the agenda, but there are definitely counties in the, in our region that have some, some stuff they're gonna be working on, so. And then the twenty-second, I did have the meeting with Commissioner Pierce with the, with the city, and she covered that. Twenty-eighth, I had a beta meeting. Having, you know, starting the discussion of that, the, the afternoon, or excuse me, the weekend, providing the weekend ridership and different things. We've had some good press recently of the city council, hoping to fund them a little more to try to get that. But their, end of their fiscal year is coming up here, so we're going to see where the, the year ends and see for them, and see if we can redo that. Or we're also talking about the effects that it's had. Has anybody picked up the slack? Like, there has been one church that has borrowed or used a beta bus on Sunday mornings to pick up their parishioners and bring them back, and that's worked. But it's only been one, and so we're hoping to maybe reach out and see if that's something else we can keep going. So there'll be a discussion, further discussion on that as we get final numbers for the year and the stuff too, so. There's a lot of discussion there at the beta meeting. That's it.
Commissioner Johnson?
Along with other commissioners, a conservation tour, which was very informative. Quite warm at times. It was interesting going into the greenhouse up at nor, or on the east side of Bruce there. It was kind of a neat deal. On the twenty-first, went to the Ten County meeting up in Clear Lake. And on the twenty-sixth, we had a BCOAC Advisory Board meeting. We still have some heating and cooling issues we're working on, and I guess we're kind of looking forward to when the, the parking lot gets done. That's all I have.
When is the parking lot to be done?
Completion date is October fifteenth.
My report will be real short, because you all covered everything that I went to, so I'm not gonna repeat it again, but thank you very much. I'm gonna declare a recess. We didn't have anything else, did we? Other regular business at this point. I didn't see anything else. I declare recess till nine thirty for a public hearing on our higher department's twenty-twenty-five-year plan, so. I declare recess till nine-thirty for a public hearing, um, on our higher department's twenty-twenty-five-year plan, so, yeah, we're in recess. Professional budget. At nine-thirty, that's at nine-thirty, okay. Professional budget first and then, uh, we are in recess.
So I'll call the meeting back to order for our 9:30 scheduled items. It's a public hearing in action to approve resolution number 19-37, the provisional budget for fiscal year 2020. Is there a motion to approve?
Moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded at this point in time, I'll open a public hearing. Is there anyone here who would like to address our provisional budget? Anyone here? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and open it up for board comments. And who wants to go, Vicki? The board? Stacy?
The public or the provisional budget was included in your packet. You know, we've been working on this since June. There, this is a, for the most part, a balanced budget. There are a couple cash applies where we are. The intent is to spend down some money in the highway fund. $475,000 and also in 24/7, just shy of $52,000. Otherwise, all other funds balance at this point. There's really no changes to make today. This is just for any additional comments or anything that, any changes that you might want to see between now and the 24th of September is when the annual budget will be approved. Then at that time, any changes that do occur will be adopted as a separate resolution and line items read into, read into the minutes on the changes between the provisional and the annual budget. But otherwise, if there isn't any other discussion, this kind of gets approved as is today. Potential changes, there will be some changes with utilities. I think Vicki had mentioned that as part of her report earlier. Nothing too significant. You know, I don't know if we'll get insurance information. You know, if we get that and we can take a look at it and see if there's maybe something that needs to be changed with that in the next couple of weeks, we can do that. We will present that as a change, but those are really the only things that I know of right now.
Questions? Anybody have any questions? No questions?
Just one comment, I'm sorry.
Borsna, go ahead.
Did we, I can't remember where we left off in terms of building funds related to the highway department shops and those spaces. Because I know we had talked about it a few times and then we had had our tours, but I don't know if we've revisited where we landed with that.
Do you remember, do we have that, that specific budget, Vicki? Do you have that line item budget for highway for 301 with you by chance? I don't.
I didn't bring it with me.
We did end up adding money into that 301 fund.
Okay.
Anticipating some potential projects out there. I can't recall the dollar amount offhand, but I know that we did add some additional funds into this budget anticipating some things out there as well as the courthouse, I believe the BCOAC as well, so.
And we had those earmarked per project, not just generally allocated to that fund, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
We do.
Yep.
I can bring that up before, you know, the meeting's over here too, because I can run down and get it in between.
Perfect.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
I just wanted to make a comment, and this is maybe just for anybody that's watching on TV more than anything else. We've been through all these numbers. This will be our third time that we've really looked at the budget as a commission. And I want to thank Vicki because I know you already said what's going on in your office, and this is a lot of work and this is a great job and our, our budget looks pretty good. Thank you.
I would echo those same sentiments along with Stacy's help with Vicki. It takes a team effort to put those things together. And also all the, the department heads, because it's important that you get your numbers into, to them, for them to process. Anything for us, so we appreciate that. Anything else? With that, we'll call a roll.
Borsna? Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Since our next scheduled item is not until 10:00 AM, I'm going to move into executive session. We've got two sessions or two subjects, so which is the first one?
We're actually going to, let's do personnel. SDCL 125 to 1 for personnel and 125 to 6 for security. I think we can get those two topics done. But I think before 10 o'clock. If not, we'll come back out, but.
Is there a motion to move into executive session for?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, are in all favor say aye.
Aye.
We are now in executive session. We will be back at 10 o'clock for sure for the public.
Mr. Chair, I would move that we come out of executive session.
Second.
Second.
Motion made in second. If all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post nay. We are out of executive session. We have a scheduled agenda item at 10 o'clock. Public hearing in action to approve the Brookings County Highway Department's 2025 year plan. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Aye.
Motion made in second. At this point in time, I'll open up a public hearing on the five-year plan. Is there anyone in the audience would like to address the five-year plan? Anyone want to address the five-year plan? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing and entertain comments from the commission. Any comments from anybody on the commission on the five-year plan? Or Brian, would you like to explain anything that's different than what we've seen before?
These are just the state forms, no changes, other than we put it on the forms to submit it to the state.
Any questions after his report?
Brian, were you going to mention there was one email from Lake Hendricks Township? I think noted for the record that we had received that email that had some questions.
I guess I didn't see that one. Where is that? Yes, I do recall this now, and we did respond to those emails. But as you can see, the sufficiency of those bridges does not constitute replacement at this time. As when you start looking at sufficiencies 60-plus, you're not even able to qualify on the bridge program to get funds. You know, this would be, if we were to do any replacement, this would be 100% county funds. So with that being said, that's why those structures are not being looked at.
Yeah, the two bridges in question were in Lake Hendricks Township, highlighted in orange.
I guess, is there any questions on any of them?
Any other questions? Commissioner Pierce.
Brian, I know that there are some people in the audience that are here from Madeira Township. And could you just explain so that everybody understands what's going on with the Sinai Bridge?
The Sinai Bridge has been awarded. As far as the big program goes, and that's at a 50-50 cost share between the state and Brookings County. And that is scheduled for next year.
And bidding will take place when on that?
Bidding, or the awarding will be either this fall, in October, or it'll be in March.
And do you have an idea at this point, because I think people want to know this, when we think that bridge might be done?
With the intent of bidding it when we are, the intent most likely will be similar to, you know, the completion date of November 1st of next year. And like I mentioned earlier, they're starting to work on the 77 bridges again. But we're going to meet, like I mentioned before, I've been trying to organize a meeting between myself and the state and Pram construction in order to kind of figure out a better timeline of what their anticipated intents are. You know, weather pending, if they're actually going to remove that bridge or not, the second one. So with that being said, if it does get pushed back into next year, I would anticipate that they would probably bid on that project to move from them up to the Sinai structure. So I guess it's all weather dependent at this point.
Quick question.
Commissioner Crogman.
The chip ceiling, you had talked a different way of doing the chip ceiling down the road.
Yeah, we're looking at, since our co-op with Moody County, they're kind of limiting the amount of miles they're doing. We're up there in that, you know, 30 to 50 miles where they're doing, you know, 12 this year. And then looking at the age of the equipment and the investment you'd have, we're going to be looking at contracting our chip ceiling out next year.
Is the funding?
It's reflected in those dollar amounts.
Gotcha. That's what my question was.
And I've spoken with three or four different contractors. Two from the southern end of the state, one out of Minnesota, they're interested in picking up the work. There again, we do it one to two weeks out of the year, three weeks out of the year, they do it every week. Going around and looking at other counties in my previous experience, who is getting up with a better product.
Any other questions or comments? Questions or comments? Okay, well, there's a roll call on this one. Call or roll?
Crogman.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Boersma.
Hi.
Bartley.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We're going to move into a public hearing update on the jail remodel project from BKV Group. Bruce, come up and identify yourself, please.
Commissioners, hi, I'm Bruce Schwartzman with BKV Group. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. So from the last time we were here, back in August, we had some additional information review. This by far is not the end of the information as we're developing it, this is just another iteration of a step. Let me pull up the agenda if I could on my computer real quick. So the things we wanted to discuss today, first off, one of the questions was the material of the building. When we were doing the design some time ago, we looked at a variety of materials. And we talked about materials that replicated, oops, if we can go back to the original one. The materials, thank you, materials that replicated or mimicked what was going on in the courthouse. And there was a feeling at that point in time to kind of utilize some of the materials, which is a veneer system. So if we were to use like a limestone material similar to courthouse, which is a gorgeous material, it's a veneer system. So you have like a block backup wall, and you put the limestone on the face of it. Nice material, and even the brick, the brick of the law enforcement center is a veneer system with brick on the face. So you can use a veneer system, but there's a cost associated with a veneer system. So one of the things that we really wanted to vet out a little bit with the board if we could, was the idea of possibly using precast, a precast panel system. So now if we could go to the next slide, please, thank you very much. So some of these images, which are a variety of facilities around North Dakota, Minnesota, and South Dakota, are all samples of precast buildings. So they don't look like a warehouse, they don't look like Menards or Home Depot. They can be very nice buildings. And a matter of fact, some of the newer, I think dorms and whatnot that are occurring over at North Dakota, or South Dakota State, rather, I think there's one in the middle as well as the one at the bottom, correct Anthony? Yeah, so a few of those images are actually newer housing units that were built over at, on South Dakota State. And those are all precast panel buildings. So what they do is they utilize, they have a brick that's inset into the concrete. But when they come out, they just tip those walls up. So there has been some very quality buildings that allow you to use precast panels. I think the next slide goes into some of the things. So really what that was, is that we were looking at, you know, what's the aesthetic impact? What's the cost impact or ability, life expectancy? To really discuss a little bit with the board what the differences are amongst the two. I don't know, Anthony, if you want to go into that a little bit?
Yeah, thank you. Sorry, Anthony Enright, BKV Group. So some of the factors that we were asked to consider when we look at precast panels is these four that you see up on the screen. What would the cost difference be? Clearly, you heard from the construction managers that you interviewed. And it's been our experience as well that the cost of precast panels is going to be significantly less than doing a masonry cavity wall. In part, that becomes a schedule savings in that they go up much more quickly. And you don't have the labor of actually building that masonry cavity wall. From a durability standpoint, there's been some discussion about which is more durable. They're fairly equal, you may have less issues over time with a precast panel in that you don't have the same weeps and flashing and things that you would with a masonry cavity wall. Life expectancy, they're probably in the same range. Again, there's going to be more maintenance overall with a masonry wall in that you may have to re-point the wall, you may have issues with flashing as you get out into the 20, 30-year range. From a construction schedule standpoint, that's where precast really has the benefit. You are able to put these up much, much more quickly. You'll see a building of this size go up in a matter of weeks as opposed to a matter of months from an exterior shell standpoint. So those are the factors. Again, I know you asked this question to your construction managers and got similar answers. So we just wanted you to consider those things as you consider the possibility of using precast.
So again, we think it's a very viable material to be considered. We think from an aesthetic standpoint, as you saw from some of the images, you can do very, very attractive buildings and still use a precast approach, a precast panel approach, cost, durability. I think all of those things are why you're seeing them done on facilities all over the country. And Gage Brothers, who's right here in South Dakota, is a very, very good precast company. As a matter of fact, we've talked with them, and they're the ones doing some of the housing projects over at the university. So I think that was our, and again, if the commissioners have any questions at all? The next thing that we were looking at was the different, understanding of the massing, understanding of the horizontal relationships. And again, these are very preliminary layouts, just to give some initial understanding of the massing and the building stacking, if you will. There are a couple differences in the designs that are being showed, but they're not developed to the extent we're going to develop them. They're very subtle at this point in time. But this is looking from the east elevation. And you can see that that lower section is the law enforcement center in the front of the courthouse. And then off to the right-hand side, then starts to show the size and proportions of the new addition as it would stack up and as it would relate to it. And again, what happened, so that's from an elevation standpoint. And again, we're not presenting design options to you, we need to refine those. But part of the question is, if precast is acceptable, we have two strong scenarios that we'd like to show you in precast. One is a little more of a detailed approach that was very similar to what you saw and approved in the earlier design. And one is going to be a much more simplified but refined approach. So there's two options we're taking. But you can see in the lower diagram, basically the height relationship is, we're trying to keep it as tight as we can. The tier that's called out, the first and second tier, that's the mezzanine of the cells. So when you stack those jail housing units, you create that tier or that mezzanine second level. So again, you're keeping them low, we're keeping it as tight as we can. At first and lower level, of course, is the existing law enforcement center over there. And what we're looking at when we're doing the elevations, and you can see it more on the west than necessarily on the east elevation. But as we go scroll, we're looking at relationships to the courthouse that make sense. So this next elevation is, that's looking from the north elevation, south. So we're standing up on the north side, looking south. Again, you can see that we're trying to hold the addition as low as we can appropriately for the spaces that are needed in the building. And this did show, there's a whole variety of pieces. We're still, you know, there were some things that we heard in the initial design critiques. You know, it's a jail, so as a jail, does it need windows? No, it'll have breakable skylights for smoke relief and natural light because you want to make these humane spaces. But it doesn't really need windows. But there was some initial comments early on that, you know what, this blank wall, it's too sterile, it needs some things. So, you know, there's two ways we're looking at it. In this design approach, we potentially could have windows with a security glass, with obscure glass in there and things to get light in, but, you know, to break up the massing in the front. The other more refined design option, we're looking at using a relief, just a recess in the precast concrete, which is actually is currently on some of the areas of the courthouse. So we can do the same thing of breaking up the mass with relief versus windows as well. So we'll talk about that. But again, this shows some of the banding, some of the relationships. It's not in the detail that I will, that we eventually will present to the board.
What this also starts to show you is some of the different levels within the jail. Because of the grade on site, we've got some different levels happening within the jail and some ramping that happens there. So you can see if you're questioning why that first level is different than the first tier, or why, you know, you see some of those different changes or some exterior stepping. That's all addressing some of the civil concerns that we're in process of working through with civil.
Excellent, thank you. Stacy, if you could please go to the next line. So again, this is looking, so this is option two. And you really can't see what we're, actually, you know what, go to the next slide. I think the next slide, actually, if you wouldn't mind. Okay, so this is actually the west elevation. I think the west elevation is more the Germaine elevation to look at. So the very top, of course, you have the existing courthouse on the right-hand side, and you have the jail facility on the left. And we're looking at ways of, when you talk about relationships and materiality, there's some banding. There's a base element to the existing courthouse. And then there's another kind of a first-tier kind of element that has horizontal lines to it before it goes more of a horizontal mass. And it's how do you relate this new addition, or this new building adjacent to it? Not even addition, but the building adjacent to it. So we looked at where those horizontal bands related. And what we're trying to do is respect it, but not necessarily mimic it in certain ways. So, and you've got to remember too, between the new jail addition and the courthouse, in the background is the existing law enforcement center, it's kind of faded back in the back, but there is that existing building that's still there. As you go to the next one, and again, it shows the section, but as you go to the next one, and we'll develop this more in a little bit, I know one of the commissioners was very interested in some of this. But if you go to the next one, I think it shows, oops, back one, I'm sorry, it should have been there. Yeah, this one is a little cleaner. So this one, and it hasn't, some of my refinements haven't been picked up just yet. But you can see that when you look at the addition, there's a band that occurs. And that band is, where that horizontal band occurs is meant to relate to what's going on to the courthouse. And the idea of how it steps out or how it forms, again, it doesn't want to copy the courthouse, but there wants to be some subtle nods to what the courthouse proportions are. Go ahead, Anthony.
So Stacy, if you could go to the previous slide, and then we'll go right back to this one. So the difference, one of the things you can see is the difference between the two. And like Bruce said, we'll come with more refined versions of this. But just to kind of, in a nutshell, say, for that base piece, you can see the proportion of the base piece in this version is identical or similar to the proportion of the base piece in the courthouse, whereas in the next one, if you flip the next slide. In the next one, that band actually physically carries across. So there's, you know, that's the kind of thing that as, with the subtlety of, should that band physically carry across in exactly the same elevation, looking at it really is more of an elevation? Or should that band be more the same proportion? And as a pedestrian, you'd sense that as you walk by as opposed to it being a direct elevation. So those are some of the subtleties we're in process of exploring, but we want you to at least see the process.
And it's interesting, as we did this exploration and this study, because of the massing of the new building, to replicate some of the bandings, it's almost too short. It's almost too, proportionally, it's too short, and it feels awkward. By relating to the one band and simplifying it above, actually gives it a better proportion, a better feel. But we'll bring those back. If it's acceptable to the commissioners, what we'll do is bring back these two options refined in a much more perspective, designed, developed relationship. So you can see the two and say, yes, this is clearly a better option than that option, assuming we're going with the precast. If we're not going with the precast, we'd really kind of fall back on that. As a matter of fact, in the next presentation, we'd probably show you, here's the original design that you all liked. Here's the two options in precast.
Bruce, we don't have a pointer here, but I'm asking Stacy to try and run her mouse across when you talk about bandings so that I understand exactly what part of the drawing you're talking about.
Yep.
We'll get you a laser pointer next time, so you can describe it. I understand it, but I don't know you.
No, you're absolutely right, Commissioner. Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. So, you can see in this relationship, which was this first option, the goal of this first option, our designer, and I think you met Dave Horner at a previous meeting, was to take, when we looked at the limestone approach, and to take those same materiality and those same relationships and show it in the precast. It just feels truncated. It just feels, the height of this building just doesn't relate well. That's why we started looking at a more simplified approach, which I think, if done well, could work, could be a very attractive building, could be a complement to the campus. So, again, I think we need to develop more, but we wanted to at least make sure we address this. So, we will be working on it more. We will bring back perspectives. And actually, to tell you the truth, the commissioner's question, I think we'll do an enlarged version of the datum relationship, so we can discuss that, too, and see you're comfortable with the direction it's going as well. One of the other things we had on the agenda, too, was just to talk about budget, where are we at budget-wise. Construction engineering, even though things are not totally fine, and I should talk about these, too. So, we've been working diligently, I think most of you know, after these meetings, we've been having three, two- to four-hour meetings with Bart and some of the staff over at the jail to go through some of the internal issues. What type of security glazing, what type of lock, where are the cameras, how are we phasing the project, because we're looking at a multitude of phasing to keep them in operation and to keep the jail working while construction's happening around them and moving people appropriately. Excuse me. So, we've been going through that, and really, the plan is resolved well. I mean, the limits of the footprint are the limits. I mean, we know the area that we're, we have to work with, and we've been doing a lot to make sure that that works well. And I think at the end of the day, this will be a very, very functional facility for a long time to come. So, anyway, if anybody has any questions on the internal as we start to develop it more, that's kind of what we showed as well, just for the commissioners' information. The other piece really is the estimate, and we've been working back and forth with construction engineering. We've given them the documents, and the documents are, you know, at this point, architectural, mechanical, electrical, structural, security electronics. I mean, we're developing a full set of documents, even though we're still in the design development stage. And based on their experience and based on where we are within the documents, the last number that I presented to the commission back, I want to say it was February or so, we were right about 13.7 million, somewhere. That was the total budget. We know that you have some construction funds tucked away, but the total project that we were talking about at that time was about 13.7. The preliminary estimate, and I want to qualify it, it's preliminary, we still need to work with construction engineering and go through a lot of variables, but right now, they're right about 14.7. So, there is about a million dollars increase of what we estimated versus where we are, where with the preliminary estimate at this point in time is. When we come back to the commission on September 26, I believe, in that packet before that meeting, you'll have the updated estimate. So, we'll go through that in more detail at that point in time and address any questions. I think one of the things we probably will do is if, and I defer to the commissioners for direction, but typically what we would do is we would also bring to you in that meeting possible alternates as well. So, 13.7 was where we were at, you know, what are some alternates? We could put in there, like additive alternates for bidding. So, you know, whatever. There could be some variety of things that we, that might reduce the cost of the project, and those are alternates potentially bid. So, I think that's kind of where we are in the overall budget. And again, we've got to vet that out a little bit more and go through it. Schedule-wise, it's actually, September 24 would be the next meeting. I think at that meeting, again, we're going to be doing a summary of the DD. We do not only the design exercise we talked about here, but we talked about having a fly-through, kind of quick animation. They typically will run a minute, two minutes, where we can walk you through the facility. So, we'll do a quick animation on that. And then I think after that meeting, we really go into what's considered the construction documents, where we finalize all the documents. And I think we're still looking at issuing the project for bid late January, sometime in early February, and actually starting construction in April. So, I think, big picture, that's where we're at schedule-wise. But again, we'll go through that more on that September 24 board meeting as well.
Just a question on the precast versus the veneer. I like the looks of the precast. I think it's done very well. I think it helps with construction costs. Obviously, there's a lead time to put the precast together once you've designed that precast. In the transition from inmate state to the new facility from the old facility, is precast going to help us with that transition versus conventional veneer construction?
You know, expedite it. The speed of the project will be a lot quicker. You're talking about moving from one phase to the other?
Right.
I think your biggest benefit is the speed at which the precast will go up. I mean, we still have to, the first phase is going to be remodeling or adding on that front component piece because the 24/7 has to stay in operation. So, we're, on the east side, we're kind of building that first component to get this 24/7 piece in setup. Then what we're doing is, as that's occurring, building the shell around it and moving 24/7. Once the new jail is set up and we know that things are in place and proper for having inmates in there, then we can move all the inmates out of the existing facility and start to gut and remodel that phase. So, I think that the biggest benefit is the fact that the precast will go up fairly quick.
We need to make that precast decision rather quickly if you're going to start the 24/7 program ahead of it. That's the first component I know the sheriff was interested in. So, we need to make that decision as a group here rather quickly to help you with design characteristics. I'm sorry, the guys behind you are from Gage Brothers?
I'm sorry?
No, they're not from Gage Brothers. Okay, anyway.
The gentleman here from construction engineering, if you have any questions for them as well, but.
No, a question for Gage Brothers, but we can ask him that down the road a ways.
In order for us to finish the construction documents, it's one type of drawing versus another. It's apples and oranges. So, for us, we almost really can't proceed in construction documents until we know which direction we're going.
Exactly. I guess I would entertain a discussion.
Was there more advantage or heating and cooling efficiency of the precast?
I'm sorry?
The heating and cooling efficiency of the precast?
No, but by energy code, we're still going to create the insulated envelope, you know, whether it's an insulation within the cavity or whether it's in the wall. Again, you know, it's interesting when you, and we do have some samples of precast, too, but when you get a precast wall, there's an interior width of concrete, and they'll set electrical boxes and things within that wall. Then you have your rigid insulation and whatever your exterior veneer is. And so, when they come and set it up, it's good to go. And for a jail facility or a facility that doesn't need a lot of interior finishes, other than painting it, they're good to go. You know, so it's a very quick, efficient, whereas there's, the veneer system, when you think about it, you've got to build that block wall. You've got to waterproof that block wall. You've got to put your rigid insulation against it. And then on all the little ties, you've got to put your interior, you know, your exterior material against it. So, it's a much more time-intensive kind of setup. Now, to be quite candid with you, the conversation sometimes has come, veneer versus, or a precast versus masonry, if there's a lot of masons in an area, and they think that you're going to get an extremely good bid. But again, we've been doing this over and over, and I'm sure construction engineering could talk to it. It's still going to be most economical to go precast.
And I think in prior conversations that we had, and it said this on the form that's up on the screen right now, but this is important to me, longevity of the exterior of the building will be either equal to or exceed if we do masonry. The precast is the better choice from that perspective.
You have less issues long-term, like Anthony said, you know, the joints themselves, the weep holes that you have in a veneer system and keeping those clean. Overall, you have less maintenance with a precast wall. You might have, precast panels come typically anywhere from eight to 12 feet wide, and you'll have a joint there. Other than that, it's pretty simple.
Is there any desire for the commission to make a decision on that today? Do you want to see more examples? I like the precast.
I like the precast.
I'm absolutely in favor of precast in this case, particularly being mindful of the capabilities of precast, the scheduling, the cost implications, the fact that we're using taxpayer dollars to accomplish this whole thing. Time is money, and we all know that. And the reality of preliminary budget being what it is, I think we have to be mindful of time and expediency and the ability to get that whole structure dried in as quickly as possible to make construction in the interior feasible. That said, I think we're going to have to spend a fair amount of time figuring out what the exterior aesthetic of those panels would be.
And that's a good point, Commissioner, because I think there's a lot of opportunity. So, if we were coming to you and saying, okay, we can do the precast, but it's got to look like Menards, you might say, hold it here. But there is that opportunity to still make a very attractive building using precast.
Well, I think you have a consensus to go down to precast.
Excellent.
I didn't hear Commissioner Jensen. I'm sorry.
Yes, I agree.
He nodded. I can't. Any other questions?
There's any other questions?
Any questions?
Precast and a lower budget, please.
We'll put that on the menu.
I do want to thank you for bringing the elevation studies and those section diagrams because I think it helps to illustrate to the public as we look at things, what the visual impact of that structure is depending on which side of the building you're on. I think drilling down a little bit to the kind of surface articulation of those spaces and surfaces is going to be important, but also understanding the pedestrian experience is important. Overall, the building massing on the west facade being brought down as tight as we can, I think is helpful to the actual courthouse itself. I know that the challenge and the question of this project has always been the building height and massing. One of the things that hasn't been touched on, and I think would be helpful for the public to understand, is the fact that ceiling heights have to be as tall as they do because of security issues, and how inmates kind of act and respond in those spaces where the ceilings have to be inaccessible to them, and the amount of space dedicated to mechanical systems. So, if you would mind touching on that just a little bit, so people understand why that height has to be what it is.
Be glad to.
Yeah, I think as some of the commissioners have seen in tours of similar jails, particularly newer jails, one of the goals we try to accomplish in day rooms is to make sure that none of the ceiling spaces are accessible to inmates. So, even if an inmate is on the second tier, we need to make sure that they can't get into a ceiling space. So, we accomplish that in a couple of different ways. One is by having hard-lid ceilings that extend out from the mezzanine, but obviously, we don't want an entirely hard-lid space. Otherwise, we have an echo chamber that becomes untenable for the inmates themselves and for staff. So, we have to have some ACT ceiling in those spaces. So, we do that, try to make them at least a certain distance above the inmates themselves. We also have to have a mechanical plenum. So, there's still the reality of having ducts that go across there and a mechanical plenum. Likewise, in some of the corridors you see through the middle of the space, we want a ceiling to be at least high enough an inmate can ever touch that ceiling. So, that would equal, generally speaking, about 10 feet. So, that kind of dictates on, as you see it on the side of the building where booking is, where you see some green and some gray, that that has to be at least a minimum height in order to accomplish that corridor. So, there are some functional and technical concerns that go along with those ceiling spaces. They can't be shrunk down too small in order to get structure, mechanical, and a ceiling height.
And in the housing unit side, where you have all those pods of cells, the construction that we're proposing, these steel cells, the way they stack minimizes the additional height. So, again, those are probably as efficient as you can get. If you'd started to use block construction there versus steel and had to construct it, you'd probably be adding 16 to 18 inches of height.
So, we're doing everything that we can, basically, to continue to try and minimize that height within the realm of what is possible and secure.
Exactly.
And I'm sorry, I want to repeat back something you just said to be sure I understand
it. By going with the pre-made cells, we're saving about.
About 16 to 18 inches of total height versus block and a plank concrete setup.
I didn't realize that. Thank you.
Any other questions for BK, Bruce, or Anthony? If not, I would like to thank both of you for your updating your report. This is maybe going to be a little bit unorthodoxed here, but it does say public hearing, so I'm going to ask if anybody from the public would like to make a comment on what was presented today, what was presented today. Please limit comments to about three minutes, and we'll take a couple of comments. If anybody's got any comments they'd like to make. It just says public hearing.
It's not a public hearing. It says following the 10:00 AM public hearing. This was just an update.
It's just an update, but I'd like to give anybody an opportunity if they'd like to have a comment or a question answered. If not, we will probably do that again at another meeting. Just, we want to work with the public. We want to work with the people. We want to work with the commission. So, please understand that we're not here just doing this on our own. We'll take advice. All right, with that, we'll close the public here. Do we have any other business to, before we go into executive session again? Hearing now, entertaining motion to go into executive session. Go ahead and read it.
125-24 for contract negotiations.
So moved.
Second.
Those made in second, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We'll move into executive session in five minutes. Thank you.